Good evening, everyone. We will call the Smyrna Council Mayor and Council Meeting to order at 7:31. And for our invocation and our pledge to the flag, Pastor Nixon from Vinings Lake Church on Cooper Lake Road, if he would come forward, please. And if you will give us our dedication and then say the pledge to the flag. Everyone, please stand.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for each day that you give us. Thank you for this city. Thank you for the privilege to be a part of everything that you're doing around the world and specifically in this place. Thank you for the leadership represented tonight. Thank you for the people that are looked over by the leadership and in many ways across this city and this community. Thanks for your grace and thank you for your goodness to us. And we love you in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. The mayor is not feeling well tonight, so I'll be directing the meeting. First issue we have are land issues, zonings and annexations. And the first one, I think, is going to be tabled. And I'll just turn this over to Mr. Fennell for him to make that motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items that are a continuation of an earlier application at North Cooper Lake Road, a project offered by McLean Construction. You may recall about three months ago, they came with an application to permit entrance from Plant Road into their site. That was not granted. And he has retooled an application and submitted to us last Thursday, a new application which would take the house that is the fronting on North Cooper Lake Road house as a part of that larger project, take that house down and enter for a 12-home subdivision that would be fronting on North Cooper Lake Road. That application of the changes has been submitted. It's gone through our planning department. I am proposing that we give a chance for the Planning and Zoning Board to revisit it next Monday. I have pledged to the citizens impacted in that area for another public meeting with the developer and the staff to answer whatever questions. And I've scheduled that for the next available date, which happens to be next Thursday, the 12th. That meeting will occur at Bronner Hall at 7:30 PM. And I invite any public comment, either at Planning and Zoning in this room on Monday or at the Bronner Hall hearing on 7:30 on Thursday. It's a meeting, not a hearing. With that, Madam Mayor, I propose that we hold 2014-034 table until June 16, 2014.
All those in favor of that, please vote. We have a vote and a second, I mean, a motion and a second. Okay, do you have that, Terry? Because it's not showing up on my screen. Okay, that passed.
Six, nothing.
To zero.
Okay. Madam Mayor, the second item, Item B 2014-036, is the attendant sewer, sanitary sewer piping to allow for tap-in for this project. I also move that they transfer together, so that I'm moving to be tabled till June 16 as well.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Terry, Nollwitz seconded that. All in favor, please vote. That's six-zero. Passes. Under formal business, we have approval of the proposed budget for FY 2015. That's Item 2014-121. Mr. Taylor?
Madam Mayor, pro temp. We've had the required budget hearing for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2015. This was at the meeting two weeks ago. We've also had an additional public input session on Thursday from 10 until noon in our finance office for anybody who wanted to come by and express issues on the budget. We've also talked about it quite a bit as a group, you know, in terms of among Mayor and Council. So at this point, it's staff's recommendation that we move forward with adopting the citywide budget for fiscal year 2015 at $73,670,22. Also have an additional public hearing for this evening, in case anybody else wants to comment.
This is in Ms. Nollwitz's ward.
Yes, I would like to take a moment to comment. Again, this is a very, it's a substantial document. It is $73.6 million that we are, that we've been discussing. I think it is to our staff's credit and all the work and thoughtfulness that they put into this budget, that after hours and hours of discussion, the changes have been relatively insubstantial in terms of dollar amounts. I mean, we're talking about less than $2,000 that we've changed from what had been proposed to us, more or less. And I think that, again, that says a lot for the staff. I want to take a moment to thank staff, the department heads, the finance department, the city administrator, for the effort that they put into this. The fact that they do work together as well as they do is the reason why we can boast a AAA bond rating here in Smyrna, and it is to be commended. So I thank you for everything that you've done.
Is there any discussion? You made your motion?
I have not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to make any comments that have not had a chance to do it before? Okay.
And again, there was a full presentation at our meeting two weeks ago. There was a public information session last Thursday. And tonight, we are prepared to vote on the budget. And this time, I would like to make a motion to approve Item 6A. This is Item 2014-121. It is the approval of the proposed budget for FY 2015.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, we have a tie vote. So I will vote to move forward. Break that tie. Is that right, Mr. Cochran?
Okay, we have a tie vote, not on a table, but on actually approving the budget. So your vote would be to break the tie to either approve the budget or to not approve the budget. So a vote to break the tie in favor of the motion would be approving the budget, and the other way would be disapproving the budget.
Okay. I make a motion to break the tie by moving forward with the budget. That carries four to three. Wrong with my motion. The next item, Mr. Lenika, I believe that belongs to you.
Yeah, you want to do the background?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, pro temp. We have Item, let's see what is this? Item number 7A is issuance of a commercial building permit for a new QuickTrip convenience store with fueling stations at 4495 South Cobb Drive. This particular location has, for a number of years, been serviced by a Texaco and also a KFC was on the site for a number of years and has been vacant for at least two or three years. The convenience store will have a gross floor area of 5,858 square feet and an estimated construction cost of $528,000. KGD Group will be the general contractor for the project. We do recommend approval.
Thank you. The city administrator has explained that this is on the northeast corner of that intersection, the east-west connector and South Cobb Drive. I know demolition has already begun, and, you know, I think this is a good move for the area. It will provide competition for the new racetrack store. And I think when businesses compete for the affection of Smyrna residents, the residents win. So I move to approve Item 2014-156, issuance of a commercial building permit for the new QuickTrip convenience store at 4495 South Cobb Drive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, that's a six-zero. Our next item is our consent agenda. Mr. Taylor?
We have two items on the consent agenda for this evening. Item A is an approval of the minutes for the May 19, 2014, Mayor and Council meeting. And Item B is an approval of modifications to personnel policies, EMP 11-0, that's an incentive proficiency pay, and BEN 5-0 as it relates to tuition assistance and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Second, that was approved by Ms., a motion by Ms. Nollwitz, approved by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, that's a six-one vote. Our next item, we're going to go to citizens' input, and we're going to use our, leave our show cause hearing at the end of the meeting. So we have two people signed up for citizens' input. One is Ms. Harrington. Will you come forward, please? And she lives at, you can tell us where you live.
I live at 2750 Ivanhoe Lane, Smyrna, 30082.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I have two things on my agenda here. First is property upkeep.
Wait a minute, will you pull the mic closer to you so we can hear you?
Yes, ma'am.
I just moved the mic toward you. There you go.
Okay. I live on the other side of South Cobb, behind the former Blockbusters. And in general, the property upkeep is very bad there. Ivanhoe Lane, Sherwood, Floyd, and Plaza. I'd like more patrol and more ticketing because those who own properties will feel better about their community. My main issue are dogs, especially pit bulls, and how they're aggressive. I've had two attacks in the last year, and now there has been two attacks on my street within 100 feet of my yard. The first attack, I have a picture of my wounds, was in late summer on Natalie Way. It required an emergency room visit and a secondary doctor's visit. And the second incident happened on Burnt Hickory. There was no injuries to me or my dog, but it was a large pit bull. I filed police complaints on both of them. So I would like more patrol for aggressive dogs in our community.
Community development?
Actually, for, as it relates to dogs, that would probably be mostly police. And I'll be sure to talk to the police chief about it tomorrow.
I just want to walk and run and have fun with my own pup.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let me put my glasses back on so I can see you. The next lady is Ginny. Bad paw. Okay, sorry.
Good evening. I live at 2800 Ivanhoe Lane. And I'm here this evening, not because I want to be here, but I was very threatened two weeks ago when I let my dogs out in my chain link fence. And to my great astonishment, within minutes, I hear the worst growling and gnarling going on in my life. I open the door. There is a pit bull charging my chain link fence with teeth gnashed around it, trying to get to my schnauzers. I called 911. I said, "I don't know if you'll consider this an emergency or not, but they're the pit bull about to come through my fence." And she said, "Stay with me on the phone. I'll get an officer out there." While she's on the phone with me, the pit bull is starting to jump onto my car to jump over the fence. And she said, "Whatever you do, do not go out in the yard." So they came, and then animal control came. They took the dog. Great. Thought that was the end of the story. No. Several days later, I look up the street. I'm going, "That can't be the same pit bull. Impossible." There it comes down the street, runs back into my neighbor across the street's yard. I'm like, "How did this dog get released from jail?" And I called today, and I said, "Now, what do we need to do to prove a dog is aggressive? Oh, well, they have to bite somebody." I said, "I'm telling you, if you all hadn't come, that dog was going to kill my dogs. And if I had gone out there, that was animal control that told me."
Was it animal control that told you that?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't any of our police department? It was animal control?
No, no.
Okay.
So I, too, no longer walk my streets. To go to her house today, two doors down, I got in my car. I don't feel safe. My neighbor across the street, directly behind this family that apparently, I believe, has started to breed pit bulls, is disturbed that they're not cleaning up the yard. I said, "I think that's a city ordinance issue, and I don't know that animal control can help you with that." And then last Wednesday, same dog charged a neighbor walking her dog. So I-
Got to get something done about that, Mr. Taylor. We'll make sure the police are over there. Yes.
Is this a different pit bull than the one that lived on the corner that bit you last? I guess it was like summer, you said, or October?
Yeah. 2780.
Okay. So it's another pit bull in your neighborhood, is what I'm hearing?
But it's been gotten out of jail, and it's still running.
May I suggest something to you? Because I've had this happen. I had to literally let my little Shih Tzu out in the yard, in my yard, to go to the, and I would stand there with a CO2. And because there was a Mastiff that lived next door, it was horrible. And I finally moved. I couldn't take it any longer. But you're real limited on what you can do. But the, my vet suggested I get a CO2, because at least then it would shock it for a minute or so, you know? But it's terrible.
Let me also ask, Mr. Sudworth, is that something that your department can help with, with our marshals possibly? I know the waste in the yard would definitely be something, because we need to get something. This is dangerous. This is too serious to not get on it right away. And I am so sorry. Awful.
From the dog's standpoint, we control the number of animals, so we might be involved, depending if they're at the same address. We definitely can assist with the yard-related stuff. I've already made a note back there on that, and I was, I'll get one, Mr. Taylor, as well.
Well, also, do you have any connection with the animal control out of Cobb County?
Absolutely. We are in contact with them on a regular basis. We not only know the numbers, but know who we need to speak to.
I think we have to take, I think we have to take them to court, don't we? I'm not in Smyrna, but in Cobb County. You're actually in Smyrna, though, weren't you?
Yeah, it's enforced by Cobb County Animal Control. I also have another meeting tomorrow, hopefully, with county manager, David Hankerson, and I'll mention it to him as well about maybe having some animal control step up, some enforcement through there.
Susan, you can add?
I wanted to ask Ginny something else. I think you keep children sometimes, too, don't you, small children?
Exactly. That's even more dangerous. Well, we'll talk to tomorrow about that. But what I want to know is, if somebody picks up a vicious dog that's trying to attack people, what do they do with it and why do they put it back on the street two days later? I want somebody to answer that question.
Yeah, that's good.
That's actually governed by the animal control policy, ordinance that's with the city and the county has.
You want to come up here?
You know, I think it all depends on what the definition of vicious dog is. Because I think, I think once, actually, it's not just dogs. It could be cats or whatever else you have is maybe vicious. But I think that the starting point for any kind of enforcement is deeming them vicious. I'm not really sure. It's been a while since I've looked at the guidelines as far as what it means to, you know, what it takes to become deemed a vicious animal. But if, you know, if I can get your contact information, I'll follow up with some folks tomorrow. I'll give you guys a call.
I'd like to share a little bit more detail on the second attack. It was about six months ago at Burnt Hickory. When my dog and I were running down the road, this dog came out. Four neighbors came out. And as the little boy contained this large pit bull, the neighbors go, "Oh, he's out all the time." Well, I filed the police report, and it took me about two weeks to get an answer from animal control. And the next time I went back there, I saw the yellow flags around the property. It's a corner lot. And so I called them back, and I said, "You know, is this considered suitable, you know, containment?" Because they have a chain link fence in the back, but they didn't fix the gate. And they told me, "As long as the animal was not deemed to be dangerous, then that does indeed, that's fine." Well, my husband convinced me to walk back there one day, and we had the mace with us and everything. And the dog charged the fence right up onto it and never once whimpered because of the shock and everything. So it's just a matter of time before that dog goes over that fence.
Now, the key is getting it designated as a dangerous dog, vicious dog.
The property has a history. I've talked to Susan. It has a history.
Mr. Fennell, I think you had-
Yes, Ginny did the right thing in calling 911. And public safety for our citizens is the most important thing we do as a municipality. So feel free, that is your tool to use. And if the officer shows up and the vicious dog is active, and that dog charges them, they can eliminate the threat. So just keep that in mind. That is a tool you have, and I'm glad you employed it, and I want you to be safe.
And also, one more thing. Make sure that we have your phone number. I've got your address, but if you'll give our clerk your phone number, that's, he'll be in touch with you. Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Wilkerson, go ahead.
That's okay. I was thinking about the resident where they put the invisible fence out there. And I, even before, I've seen that same dog, before they put the fence roaming around the neighborhood, and then they put the invisible fence, and I've seen him out there. And I guess I kind of wonder that, too, if that is an acceptable way to keep certain dogs, you know, because they-
Have you seen him outside that, I mean, outside the yard since they put that fence in?
I'm not sure if I've seen him since the fence has been put up, but I have seen him roaming around there. No.
Does it make you feel like you've got any protection?
I've seen him once outside, and my husband walked back there and saw the dog a second time in the visible fence. And he's in the fence, but he's like charging it.
All right. So we, hopefully, we'll get that taken care of. All right, that concludes all of our business with Smyrna, except we do have a show cause hearing. And we're going to turn this over to Mr. Taylor for the background, and then Ms. Bluestein will handle the hearing.
Earlier last week, Ellen Waters appealed to the License and Variance Board for disqualification over an alcohol license. And she's here to appeal that decision to the city council tonight. So I'll turn it over to, I guess, Mr. Cochran.
Okay. Ms. Waters, would you step up before we start? Let me swear her in. Are there any other witnesses?
I do.
All right. So Eric mentioned that this is an appeal from the License and Variance Board from a denial for a server's permit. And there has been a little bit of an update, I guess, that, let me just bring to your attention, this is something new that we haven't talked about even in our pre-meeting because we spoke a minute ago during this meeting. And the update was, there was a court order Thursday. Is that correct?
Yes.
That dealt with the pending charge. Kind of a way of brief opening for the record, if we need this. Our ordinance disqualifies someone from obtaining a server's permit in certain conditions. And one of those conditions is if there are certain types of charges that are pending that have not been adjudicated yet. So there was one charge that would be a disqualification that was not adjudicated. That charge still technically has not been adjudicated because of how it was handled in Superior Court of Cab County last week. And that charge was handled by what's called a first offender order and a first offender status, which basically is a vehicle where a charge is held in abeyance for a certain amount of time, and the person charged has got to successfully complete a probation period. And once that period is successfully completed, then the charge is dismissed. It's the same as an acquittal if it's dismissed. Of course, there's a flip side to that. If it's not dismissed, if something happens, then, you know, it can be even worse. But when I actually do criminal defense work ages ago, a long, long time ago, this was what we did sometimes. We would have the equivalent of having an acquittal on a case through the first offender status. So technically, the charge that would disqualify her is still pending the cause of the first offender status, but it, but the difference is now there's been a court order that we know that if the first, if the probationary period is successfully completed, it'll be dismissed by court order. And you have documentation of that effect that you wanted to offer for them, right?
Yes. I have a court order with the, with the seal on it. It's an original copy saying that it is the judgment of the court that no judgment of guilt be imposed at this time, but further proceedings, it's the minimum time period that I could have for the probation is two years. And so until then, and after that, it'll be, there will be no final adjudication. So that was what I told my lawyer what was going on. He realized how strongly this was impacting my well-being and not being able to work. So he put a little bit of pressure on the judge to get me on the docket, and he called me, actually, the night I came before the License and Variance Board on Wednesday. And my lawyer called me Wednesday night and asked me if I wanted to go to court the next day to do this. And I said, "Yes," you know? So anything to get me back into work. So we were able to do that.
Mr. Cochran, do we need a copy of that or anything?
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be something that, I'd like to say that I have reviewed it. And if you guys want to review, we probably wouldn't want to make something like that public record if it goes into the city, because the whole purpose of the first offender is it serves as an acquittal. And there's actually ways that the state expunges records. So you don't want to have that in there. But-
You want to look at it?
I can say, well, I can say this for the record, that I reviewed it a few minutes ago, is certified copy of a court order from last Thursday that takes this case and dismisses it upon completion of the probationary, probationary period. Now, and also told her, I mean, she's probably nervous, right?
Yeah, a little bit. It's kind of a big deal.
And these are-
It's a bigger deal than what I thought it would be.
Well, and these are intended to be fairly informal. But if you would, just tell the mayor and council why you think that you should be able to have a permit to serve alcohol at, it's at-
Jim &amp; Nick's on South Cobb, right next to the new Krispy Kreme, so, which has really made our dessert sales go down. But yeah, I mean, I've been serving for five years, on and off. I have a seven-year-old daughter who is deaf, and this has been what I've been able to do with a really flexible schedule, to be able to take care of her and take her to the school that she needs to go to. And that's basically how I, I mean, it is how I support myself and pay all of my bills. And I've had, I was living in Atlanta and have a liquor permit for City of Shambly and City of Atlanta. And my lease was up where I was living there and decided to move to Smyrna for, you know, a lot less expensive and wanted to work close to my house and didn't think it would be a problem getting my liquor permit here, because these charges have been pending for a long time. This happened like three years ago and kind of forgot about it because I've moved on with my life and changed a lot of things. And when I came to get my liquor permit, I didn't realize what the rules were here. And I understand and I appreciate, you know, that you guys do take into consideration the kind of people that are working in the city and, you know, that, you know, I definitely respect that and understand that and, you know, do appreciate being able to explain all of that to you guys. And so, you know, in the meantime, since this has been going on, I've been able to, they've let me still work there, but only to bus tables, which is a lot less. So I definitely need to get back on the floor, and if I couldn't, then I needed to find other employment in a different field, so.
Okay. Well, Ms. Bluestein, go ahead, and well, anybody else that has questions?
Ellen, I think that you've been given a chance to turn it around, so you've got to make the decision to do so. It's not easy, you know? But the judge evidently saw merit in giving you a year's probation. And if we give you back your license, then I don't want to see you back here again. want to see you back here again, unless you tell us that you've got great news or something like that. Does anyone else have any questions?
Any questions over here? I don't think so.
Okay. At this time, then, I would like to make a motion that we approve Ellen Waters getting her serving permit back, and that she can make a better life for she and her daughter by working at Jim and Nick's.
We have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Noel, which second it? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Okay, that's a six-zero. You will have your license back.
Yay, thank you very much. So, I need to go back to the police station where I originally applied, or?
You know, I don't know.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Demarla, who works, yeah, the permit?
Yeah, I think you can go back tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I was saying Marla, her name, who works there.
Marla, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Good luck. Mr. Taylor has to report or some information he wants to give you about pit bulls.
Yeah, actually, as, as you guys were up here a while ago, I was texting the police chief, and I've asked them to step up the patrols over in that area, and they are going to start doing that, starting tonight. So, just wanted to let you guys know. And I've also asked them to have that same conversation with animal control.
If you do have an issue, call 911 immediately. Okay? Okay, tonight, we'll do committee reports. We'll start with Ms. Bluestein, please.
Well, I don't know what to say. If you were in Smyrna on Friday, last Friday afternoon, I'm sure you enjoyed as much as I did the, the severe storm that we had. I hope that's not a sign of something to come for the summer. But if you missed our Memorial Day event, it was, it was wonderful. It was well-attended, and I think we all have a lot to thank our previous and current soldiers for. They've given a lot of their time and their lives, in some cases, to defend us and make us the country that we are. So, with that, I yield.
Noel, let's-
The first concert on the green is this Saturday evening. I hope that all of you will join us. If the weather is like it is today, it's going to be an absolutely spectacular time. It's the AJ Gant Band, and I believe they go on around 7 o'clock. I don't know if tables are still available. You can, if they are, you can reserve them by calling the Parks and Recreation Department, but the first concert is this Saturday night. With that, I yield.
Mr. Welsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a very, don't see any of my department heads out there this evening, but I do want to at least let everyone know that we are working on a short program for the first week of July for the 150th anniversary of the Civil War, Battle of Smyrna. And just, we'll come out with some details here in the future. I encourage everybody to keep that in mind, and it'll be typically, I think, we're going to hold it at Broner, so just keep it in mind for the first week of July. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Ms. Wilkinson?
No, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Lenika?
Just briefly, I want to congratulate my wife. She's being honored as we are here tonight by Emory Healthcare for over 30 years of service as a registered nurse. She's worked at Crawford Long Hospital, Emory University Hospital, and St. Joseph's Hospital for, all for Emory Healthcare, and I'm blessed to have her caring for me. And I also want to congratulate my niece Shannon, who is getting married Saturday week, the 14th. I want to wish her and her fiancee all the best. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to congratulate Robin. What a great career of service, and thank you for looking after you. That's, that's, that's battle pay right there, brother. I had the occasion last week to attend the Weatherbrook Homeowners Association down off Camp Highland. I appreciate those folks inviting me in. We spent half an hour talking about a number of issues, and then they spent some time going with me over the budget. I'm proud that we, for the 24th consecutive year, have passed a budget without a property tax increase in Smyrna. Our fiscal responsibility is well-known. My predecessors, who have built the foundation, we just continue to build on, is, is an impressive record, recognized earlier this year with a AAA bond rating, so I'm proud to be a part of that ongoing legacy. My upcoming meeting with the Regency at Riverline this Saturday. Looking forward to talking to those folks. They are entertaining moving into the city of Smyrna. They're just adjacent to us off of Oakdale down there, and so I'm going to spend some time with them and look forward to that. And if, if you have an opportunity, when you encounter a member of our law enforcement, whether it's a park ranger, a police officer, firefighter, emergency management, 911, please do like I try to do every time, and express your thanks to them for standing on our behalf every day, 24/7/365. With that, I yield.
You also congratulate Robin for me, Mr. Lenika, and I know you're very proud of her, and- We are, too. Mr. Taylor, do you have a report? Mr. Cochran? No. Ms. Cherry-Graham? Okay. Ms. Lisa? No report. I just want to thank everybody, and I want to say to the mayor, I hope you're feeling much better tonight, and thank you for coming, and we love our city, and if there's anything we can do to help you, we're all here for you. So, don't forget to call us if you need us, and 911 if you need it. Thank you so much. With this, we adjourn.